Okay. Okay, our meeting is being livestreamed. So, good evening. We will be conducting tonight's meeting in person in city council chambers, as well as virtually using Zoom to allow staff and public to social distance. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Scott Stewart from the LDS Church will be giving the invocation this evening, and the mayor will begin the meeting immediately after. Scott, if you'd like to come to the podium?
Good evening. Our Father in Heaven, at the beginning of this city council meeting, we come together with an expression of gratitude for the community that we live in. We recognize the goodness of the many people that live in this community, for the members of the city council and the city staff for all that they do to serve and assist all the other agencies in this community and working together to build strong faithful communities and businesses that are here to make a difference. We express our gratitude for the many wonderful things that we enjoy living in this community and in the state of California and the United States of America. We recognize the fortunate blessings that come from Thee for this land, for the way in which our constitution was formed, and we're grateful to be a part of it. Father, we recognize that there are many difficult matters facing not just this community, the state, our nation, and the world at this time. And our hearts and minds are turned to Thee to petition blessings that will come, to strengthen those in civic and other community organizations, work together in the spirit of unity to bring relief and peace to those that struggle. We ask for a special blessing to be upon those that are affected by the events in the Ukraine and for all those families and people that have been relocated from their homes. We pray for Thy blessings to be upon them and that we can all work together throughout the world to make a difference, to help them. But Father, this time as we begin this meeting, we petition Thy blessings to be upon each member who will participate here. We're grateful to be, again, part of this community. We express our gratitude unto Thee and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Your concentration is remarkable.
Yes. All right, it is 6:01. Welcome to the March 8, 2022 regular meeting, City Lincoln, City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority. And so item number one, call the meeting to order. Ms. Scanlon, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Here.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Here.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Here.
And Mayor Andriata.
I'm here. Thank you. Item number three, report from closed session. Ms. Molenkov, do we have any report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, staff received direction, but there is no reportable action this evening.
Great, thank you. Item number four, Pledge of Allegiance. And I've asked our new city manager, Sean Scully, to lead us in the pledge tonight. Great, thank you so much. Item number five, Agenda Modifications. Do we have any agenda modifications this evening from the council or? All right, item number six, Presentations. We do not have any presentations tonight. And so we did have public hearing items, but they were continued to date certain to the March 22, 2022 city council meeting. And so if there's anyone here that would like to comment on the food waste or redistricting ordinance tonight, please do so under Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Okay, which leads us to item number seven, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. So, city clerk, do we have any public comments?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, and I don't see any in chambers, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will move on to item number eight, the Consent Agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item from the consent agenda tonight? Anybody from the public wishing to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I don't have any hands raised on Zoom, and I don't see any in chambers.
Okay, great. Having no requests, then I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, so we'll move on to number nine, Public Hearings. We do not have any. Those were moved to the next meeting. Item number 10, General Business. So 10A, Adopt Resolution 2022-50, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute a public art donation agreement and proceed with the proposed stacks art installation. So our library manager, Catherine Hunt, will give a staff report. Wow, we get to see you so soon after the last time. That's amazing.
I know, twice in as many council meetings.
That's right, thank you.
All right, so I just have a brief staff report because we do have the artist with us this evening to walk us through a brief presentation. But I'm excited to bring forward to the council this proposal for an art installation for the Lincoln Public Library at 12 Bridges. In mid-2021, the artist, Mr. Jim Phillips, contacted library staff. And at that point, we reviewed it. We did feel that the art installation was in line with the mission of the library. Public art has been a part of the Lincoln Public Library at 12 Bridges since its opening in 2007. And we also took it before the Library Advisory Board and Library Advisory Committee. Both of those entities gave unanimously positive approvals for it. And it was also reviewed by our facilities and building staff for the installation and the location and found acceptable. And now it is coming forward to you all. And so with that, I would like to introduce our artist, Mr. Jim Phillips.
Come up to the microphone right here, yeah.
Oh, I'm up, too. Forward and back. Hi, my name is Jim Phillips. I'm a Northern California artist, relatively new to the community. I came from Chasta County, Redding area. One of my first stops is at the library. My wife refers to me as a philanthropic artist. I don't charge for the things I do, at least for these large public installations. Let's see if I can get something. It's supposed to be one of those. I'm just gonna keep going.
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah. We'll don't catch up.
Part of what I have done in the past in the Redding area, actually in Chasta County, Tahama County, Trinity County, I have installations. And
There it is. This one we have it on.
Very senior, Lincoln Public Library. This is a place I found fairly early on when I moved here. I spent some time there doing some drawings, taking a lot of photographs. An associate of mine, a neighbor of mine, Richard Pearl, who is, I think, the city treasurer or something like that. He suggested I, he knew a little bit about what I do, and he suggested that I talk to Catherine, which I did. And we prepared this proposal, actually. It's changed just a little bit, but it's more or less the proposal that was given to the advisory committee. And
There you go.
This is what I am proposing. It's a eight-foot-tall glass and steel column. It's called the stacks. It, the glass portion is represented by the blue, light blue segment of it. That's a side view and an end view, if you can picture that. On the end view to the right, the blue line that runs down the middle of that is the glass. It's a, the steel is a wide flange beam. It's been turned, cut down the middle through the web and then turned back to back, so the flanges are back to back, and they hold the glass in place. That wide flange beam is welded to a half-inch steel plate on the bottom. And that, that's the structure of it. The plate gets anchored down to a concrete base. The, the glass is half-inch tempered plate glass. It's the kind of glass that you would see in a mall or a multi-story building that they use for the safety railing. It's very, very strong glass. The colored portions of it are traditional stained glass. And they are attached to the colored gla, or the glass panel with a glass adhesive. And that, and then they're caulked with a silicone. It's a very traditional industrial process for attaching glass. It will kind of emulate the even older tradition of leaded glass, but it won't actually be leaded glass. It'll be much stronger and much more durable than leaded glass. The location, now, this is a little bit of my background. I, I went to Humboldt State. I was an art major there. I taught school for five years after graduation. And then I migrated into the construction business. And I've spent most of my working life in the construction and engineering business. My minor in college was industrial technology. That's one of the ways I ended up in the construction business. And, and what I do now with these large public installations is mostly construction-based. It's industrial-based. That's a larger picture. It's basically the same thing. Well, I might comment, the piece on the right that's the edge view, you can see that the, when I cut the, the web of the beam, it's cut in notches, and those are sort of to emulate the profile of a stack of books. If you're having a hard time picturing, this might help a little bit. This is a perspective view of the same thing. When I started spending some time at the library, I made kind of a record of what kind of art is at the library now. And these are some pictures of, of the art that's installed at the library at this time. And this is a location, it says preferred location. Since this is a relatively old proposal, this is the location we have finally fixed on. This is on the northeast corner of the library. It's in a partially enclosed garden area. It's visible from a couple of different angles inside and also visible from the outside as you approach the library, from the traffic circle out in front of the library, either going to the school or going to the library's parking lot. These were some of the other locations we looked at. These have since been discarded. Everybody agrees that the one we picked is, is the most appropriate. These are some of the earlier pieces that I've done in, well, in Chasta, Trinity County, Tahama County. The one on the left is a three-column installation at the Redding Library. It's called Points of Departure, and that refers to one of the purposes of a library, to provide points of departure for the people that are using it. They go there to start things. Siblings is at Highland Arts Center in Weaverville in Trinity County. And it's, it's primary name is Siblings. It's made up of two individual pieces. One is control and one is spontaneity. And it's kind of the balance point that all artists have to deal with when they start to create a piece of work. The other one, the one on the right, is probably the largest thing I've done. It's 14 feet tall, two feet square, and goes down in the ground 10 feet. When, when I build these, it's not just me. There's a large group of collaborators, mostly people that I knew when I was in the construction business. They have, for many years, chipped in, provided all the concrete, all the concrete pumping, all the rebar and steel. Home Depot even contributes all my form lumber and, of course, fly with it. It's a, it's a very, I think it's a very unique situation. I, I'm very gratified every time these people jump in and, and help out. These are three others. The one on the left is also at a library, the Library Annex at Chasta College. I was involved in the construction of that annex, and I liked the oak, robe of oaks right behind the building. So afterwards, I asked the president if I could put a sculpture there, and he said that would be great, although we had a similar kind of process to approve that. And it's called Points of Perspective. And for an educational library, a library and educational institution, that's what they're doing. Those students are there to gain a point of perspective, to have a way of looking at the world. And that's the tie-in to the name of that and the perspective drawing. That, that's actually a double panel. There's one panel behind that one that you can't see. They both have designs on them. The Meander is a piece, a five-column piece that's down at the Turtle Bay Exploration Park. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Exploration Park in Redding. It's right across the park area from the Civic Center, which is the building in the background. The last one, Seeking Order, is at Chasta College, is Tahama Campus in Red Bluff. And that is a, is a comment on the, the three ordering systems for higher education, the arts, the humanities, and the sciences. And those three columns represent those three major ordering systems and then all their subcategories. So I, I told you a little bit about my background. I'll just leave this up for a second while I tell you a little bit more. The when I came down, I, I was not sure that I was going to continue to do this because I don't have this large group of supporting people, like concrete batch plants. And although Gerlinger Steel has a, an outlet in Woodland, their home base is in, in Redding, and they were always there with any steel requirements that I had. But I wasn't sure that I was going to do this. But in the time that I spent at the library and the time we spent, Catherine and I spent talking, I decided this was an appropriate thing that I wanted to do. I do it because I like doing it. So we're, we're moving forward in, in that way, and I hope that it meets with all of your satisfaction and we get to move forward on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Really appreciate that. And your work is beautiful.
Thank you.
Yes, and the fact that you just do this because you like it.
Because I like to.
Yeah, it's amazing. Thank you. All right, so we'll see if the council has any questions or comments. Yeah.
No questions. It's a wonderful project and a wonderful gift to the city that we very much appreciate. An observation, it may become the most popular among our law enforcement community with the pin blue line exposed on the edges. So, thank you. It looks like it's going to be gorgeous. Is it on the north side of the building?
It'll be in the approach area. It's on the northeast corner of the building.
So you'll get light most of the day playing through the glass?
It, it'll be with the light behind it, just daylight behind it. It'll be pretty dramatic.
Yeah, it should be. Great.
Catherine, I have one question about that location. Is that an old picture or is that the way, is it landscape like that normally? Or is that?
So there is some landscaping there, yes. And that was one of the things when we talked to facilities, about being able to locate that in there and what that would do with the landscaping.
Okay, I'm only asking because I think that's the style of it, but it looks kind of sparse. And I was wondering, is that the way it's supposed to look on that side of the landscaping there? Is that, is that the style? Yes.
Looking at that. Actually, that is kind of an old picture. It's almost a year and a half old. It's actually got almost overgrown until the, the parks or whoever takes care of your landscaping went in just recently, and I was kind of trimmed it back. It's not sparse. It'll be just fine. In fact, we may have to take a little bit of stuff out. Already done kind of an underground survey. There's a storm drain in there we have to pay attention to. The rest of the stuff is pretty minor irrigation, drip irrigation stuff. But, yeah, I think the landscaping will be fine just the way it is.
Right. I just want the landscaping to match the beauty of your, your sculpture.
One of, one of the reasons we picked it, it's kind of this little alcove of, I guess you'd call it, water-critical landscaping. It doesn't use a lot of water, but it, it, it looks really good. It will look really good.
Thank you.
I've been waiting for this to come forward. I had the privilege of being able to be at that lab class committee when you, when you, yeah, when you presented. And so I'm very pleased to see that it's finally coming to fruition. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Councilmember Carl Skent, questions, comments?
Comments? Welcome to the community. And there's a lot of other places you could use your art.
Don't tempt us. We'll take you.
Really appreciate your.
I was primarily a ceramicist, and you guys have a long culture with ceramics. My mind's kind of turning on that whole process.
Have you joined the Art League yet?
I haven't, but I have been to the building, and I am probably going to stop by there on my way out of the building.
Our city attorney is the president of the Art League currently, so you might want to chat with her.
Yes, we will.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your presentation. It'd be a great addition to, to our library. We do need things like that, you know, pieces of art. It'd be great to even look at other places, you know, maybe in front of our, you know, city hall or whatever.
My wife is actually a volunteer at the historical museum. I've spent a little time roaming around there, thinking about what, you already have some pretty interesting ceramic things over in that quad area outside the old city hall. That was the old city hall.
Yes.
Want to say anything else or? Well, thank you so much. And yes, I, but, but Councilmember Carl Skent said, welcome to the community. We're very happy to have you, and we're very thrilled about this project. So let's see if the, if there's any public comment on this.
Mayor, no hands are raised on Zoom.
Mr. Chapman? Mr. Phillips, you can go ahead and have, have a seat. And if there's other questions, we'll call you back up and you can answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilmember, city staff, Byron Chapman. Yeah, when I looked at the documents and the pictures and everything at home, boy, I was just, I, I think I'm pretty much like everybody else. I looked at that and I go, once I looked at it and the proposed area, which it's going to, I thought, I couldn't imagine it being anywhere else. It's a terrific spot. And again, appreciate that very, very much. It's very nice of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. All right, anybody else in the council chambers who wishes to make a comment?
No comment.
Yeah.
I was just sitting here, sitting here thinking. After welcoming you to the committee, community, we're a very fortunate community in that we get a lot of people with all kinds of talent that end up supporting the community through donations of time, effort, and whatever, putting their talents to work. So this is a thing that may be pushing people to understand that there are a lot of benefits to growing a community. So I just wanted to make that point.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, then I will accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-50.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes, thank you so much. We are very excited. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Appreciate it.
Thank you again.
All right, item 10B, Adopt Resolution 2022-51, authorizing the city manager to execute the property tax increment agreement between the county of Placer and the city of Lincoln as to tax rates area 076-055, said be any Q. And our city manager, Sean Scully, is going to give a staff report. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to actually go to the podium for this one. Okay, good evening, council. Thank you so much. So I have before you this evening a tax sharing agreement that we're very excited about. Primarily, it relates to the importance of the project, which I'm going to talk about here in a second. So, said B, otherwise known as the Northeast Quadrant Specific Plan. In March of 19, the Lincoln City Council approved this specific plan and associated documents. So the CEQA review, as well as infrastructure financing plan, development agreements, et cetera. The project includes 198 acres, 430 units of low-density, single-family housing, four and a half acres of parks, 22.8 acres of open space, and perhaps most importantly, almost 70 acres of commercial property for retail and other commercial purposes with a possibility within the specific plan for a five-acre conversion of, of that land to multifamily. Here's a map of the property, if you, in case you'd forgotten. Thanks to Tony, who was around here somewhere because he designed that, so appreciate that. Here is the terms. I'm going to keep this very simple because frankly, it's simple agreement. The, it's an open-ended term, takes effect on the last date of execution or when the property annexes. The initial property tax split post-annexation, we're going to call that Tier One. The county retains 61.6% of the property in supplemental tax revenue, and the city will receive the remainder. The interesting thing about this agreement and the tiers is that it really shifts, as you'll see, depending on how much commercial property is developed. And there's a very specific reason for that. I'll, I'll share in a moment. Anyway, after 450,000 square feet of developed commercial, and the way that's defined in the agreement is essentially once that building permit has been issued. So it doesn't necessarily need to be stick-built at that point. The shift splits to 54% to the county and 45.6% to the city. And then after 900,000 square feet of commercial is developed, it actually flips the lion's share to the city, at 47.3% to the county and 52.7% to the city. So the question, there's two, two thoughts here. First off, I think that it's important that as we start to see more of these come forward to the council as new projects come along, to remember that as, as the council evaluates tax sharing proposals, it's a misnomer or a mistake to try to compare those to previous agreements. Because what, the way that it should be evaluated is really project by project. Every project has different characteristics, different impacts, different zonings. And, and therefore, there's a different impact to the county and city depending on what you're annexing. In this particular instance, the reason why you see these tiered rates essentially is that, you know, to be blunt, the county wants to incentivize commercial development over residential development because their model, whether or not you agree with it, indicates that a single-family residential home or a multifamily unit has a much greater impact versus nearly no impact to commercial. And so they recognize that in the most, in this negotiation, that it was important to not just paint with a very broad brush and understand that there's some nuance to every project here. So, and in, in case you're wondering, it's in the staff report. The total square footage that could be built within the commercial area is roughly 971,000 square feet. So whether the gross floor area ends up actually getting over 900,000 square feet depends on a variety of different circumstances. It depends on tenancy. Some tenants need and require more, much more parking, which reduces your floor area. It requires, it depends on how the, the developers determine that they want to split up their commercial properties. So there's a variety of components to it. We feel very comfortable. We feel very comfortable, very comfortable, that 450,000 square feet minimally is, is essentially given on this, in this area. To get to 900, maybe slightly more challenging, but I think it's very doable, just given the kind of strategic location of, 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 uh, project. It's a, um, it's really Lincoln's best chance at, uh, a significant commercial development that has regional implications. A lot of our commercial that we have currently, while it serves Lincoln really well, and actually some of the outside lying areas, it isn't, uh, as adjacent to Highway 65 in many cases as this project will be. And we could talk about those five separately, but, but it plays in here in that, that the other three corners of this, um, intersection are, are basically all, um, colored commercial as well. So, um, only additional terms that are worth mentioning is that there's a, some language added in here that acts, uh, uh, allows for essentially a reopen. Um, and that's super unusual in California. Usually you sort of get married and you can never get divorced. And, uh, in this case, uh, basically the language seems to indicate that if there's some sort of adverse event or significant change, either party can say, hey, timeout, let's sit back down at the table. And there's provisions essentially, uh, it's like an informal mediation process where you hire a, a professional expert that's, uh, expert in finance. They will run numbers and the county and city can, at mutual agreement, come to some sort of other arrangement, which is similar to something you've done fairly recently on other tax sharing agreements. So it's good to have it in there, probably something we will fight to have in every agreement. Finally, and most importantly, uh, the city to receive 100% of, of city sales tax, uh, from commercial businesses within the annexation. When most folks probably read this, they say, well, yeah, duh. Uh, but I can tell you that that's not the case in many places. In many places, they do property tax in lieu, where the county might increase our share by 10% in property, but they also want, uh, 5% in sales. The city of Lincoln will not achieve financial stability through property tax. It's not going to happen. It won't happen for a variety of reasons. And if the council wants during your questions for me to go through the painful explanation of ERAF and how much that takes off of the top, I can do that. But just suffice to say that when cities and counties are negotiating tax sharing agreements, they're really fighting over who the biggest loser is because the vast majority of that is augmented to, to the school system and a couple of special districts. So, sales tax component to this project is significant. You know, folks could ask, hey, what do you think that this might generate on a yearly basis? Possible to tell, just given who the tenants are, it may end up being some commercial business, meaning actual office space. So it doesn't really generate sales tax in the same way. But, uh, I can tell you that 950,000 square feet is, is a lot of floor area. It, uh, I'd have to do some math, but I would, I would hazard a guess that if you took the entire Lowe's commercial area, and the entire Safeway commercial area, and the entire to be built area across kind of over by the, um, rodeo grounds, uh, that's in the neighborhood of what you're talking about in terms of scale. Next is required action. So if council chooses to approve this agreement, it will, uh, proceed through the Lafco process for annexation. It's a pretty important component under the Revenue and Taxation Code, and that's also under NOCS, which is a Lafco law. It has to be in place prior to annexation. Uh, it is, the project is literally sitting at Lafco currently. Uh, so this is one of the last pieces for them to sort of start their process. And, um, one other little component, just because I think it's important that the project, uh, residential components of the project will have to fold into CFDs, which will offset, uh, any other general fund impacts. And, um, I've already talked with the, uh, county CEO's office, and I believe they're approved. Assuming this is approved tonight, this will go to their, their second meeting in March for approval. Obviously, always alternatives, you could not approve it, and then it will sit in stasis at Lafco. Uh, and, or you could provide us alternate direction on how you'd like us to renegotiate some component of the deal. And I hope you answer any questions. Oh, and also, um, I have met with both property owners on this, majority of landholders on this project. And from a planning perspective and from a finance perspective, to me, of all of the things that are working in and around Lincoln, this is perhaps the most import, uh, important financial move that the city could make for long-term stability, uh, that you have on the books.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Scully, really appreciate that. Very informative presentation. And, um, I mean, I'm not projecting what our vote will be, but I think if we chose not to, Tony might, um, shoot us. Term going postal, yeah. All right, so let's, um, see if the council has questions or comments. Right, okay.
Just comments really, I guess. Uh, this is long past due, very grateful that we're finally getting this done. Um, appreciate Sean walking us each through, uh, each tier, if you will. Uh, and, uh, how that will affect the overall deal. I think it's a, one of the better agreements, um, that's ever been negotiated. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate, uh, separate and aside from this, you getting up and doing these presentations and, um, sharing with us your insights and, and your experience. It's great to hand things off to staff and let them present them, but I love seeing the city manager jump in when it's important and, and do a presentation. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Carlsson.
Ditto. It's a very good agreement. In fact, it's a very good agreement. But it's just the start of good agreements. They're going, all going to get better, right?
That's the idea.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Uh, yeah, thanks, thank you, Sean. I mean, that was a great presentation, and it looks like a very good agreement. Just wish all agreements like this.
Councilmember Silhaj. Yeah, I think you guys are going to hear a lot of ditto's tonight, but for the public who might be watching now or later, that's because this is long overdue, like, uh, Councilmember Joyner said, and a long time coming, and has been spoken of ad nauseam in one-on-ones and other meetings. And I am just thrilled at the result, and thank you for your presentation, and I'm thrilled to be able to support it.
So to give the public a sense of this, this has been stalled at Lafco for at least a year and a half, maybe two years, Tony? I know the whole process of 10 years.
All right, now.
So, no, that's fair though. For the public to understand, these projects take a really long time and cost a lot of money to bring forward. And, and the risk that's being undertaken, uh, by the, the people proposing these projects is extraordinary. So, um, apologize for the delays, we're going to get it done.
Girl that's finally here though.
No, I was just teasing, and I wanted to say, um, Alyssa's right, we've had lots of conversations. And so on behalf of the city and the council, we just want to say thanks for hanging in there, for your patience, for your long suffering, for dealing with our staffing shortages and, and all of the bumps along the way. But, uh, I'm really, really excited that we are, um, we're in a good place, we're in a better place. There's, only can go up from here, and, uh, with Sean's leadership with our staff, I'm, I'm excited about not only this project, but future projects. Um, and so thank you very much, Tony, and all of you, um, that are part of this deal. So let's go out to the public and see if there's any comments.
Uh, Mayor, I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Go ahead, Mr. Chapman. Nope, wow, all right, Tony, would you like to say a word? Go ahead.
And I promise I don't have any weapons.
No.
And now I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you all and congratulate you for your, um, being mayor this year. This is the first time we speak. I appreciate staff, especially, uh, Sean and his presence and staff and working hard. I know it's been a few weeks, and I think we accomplished a few weeks as much as a couple of years. I think this is really good agreement. Also, sometimes we don't have the opportunity to debate about the agreements between the county and the city. But compared to others, I see there's a positive to the city, especially about the commercial. And also, we do have residential, and a lot of people don't realize that you need residential for commercial. I remember when we had to fly and go meet with some people, people, uh, I had to count how many homes are there and how many are going to be there by the opening day. So all of it rooftop brings commercial, and I'm glad to see Lincoln have enough commercial that we actually drawing some people from Roseville. I was dining here and brought my family on the weekend, and I met, you know, next to me, a gentleman from Roseville coming to, uh, Lincoln to dine. So we were able to chat, and his family comes here to dine. So, so there's activities coming your way, and this is going to draw more and more. Hopefully, we didn't lose, uh, big commercial activities. Hopefully, we'll work hard to get them. But I think this is the best site to be in. And, you know, we already planned the site to work with the future interchange as well. So, you know, there's a lot of things went into this, uh, preparation to the specific plan. But again, seeing us close, hopefully, the next couple of months will be annexed, and it'll be through celebration to the next level. So I appreciate everybody's effort and staff, and looking forward to the new Lincoln.
Thank you, Tony, dinner's on me when we get annexed. All right, any other questions or comments or comments?
We did have a hand raised on Zoom, Josh, please go ahead.
Thank you, Tony, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. All right, any others? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. And if you have another comment or question, go right ahead. If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash 51.
Second.
Roll call please.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Carlsson.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lortzen.
Yes.
And Mayor Adriana.
Yes, all right, thank you, everybody, for that, very exciting. All right, we move on to 10, um, item 10C, another, um, long awaited discussion, um, and hopefully we'll be able to get this settled tonight. Discuss priorities, strategies, and desired outcomes for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act, nicknamed ARPA, revenue received by the city of Lincoln. And if so desired, adopt resolution 2022 dash 52, authorizing the Lincoln Business Grant Assistance Program, and direct the city manager to execute necessary agreement for the administration of the program with the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. So Sean, are you going to do this one as well? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. So, uh, ARPA, here we go, uh, yet another ARPA discussion, and I'm here to tell you, it's, it's here to stay for a few years. So one of the things that was very frustrating for me in writing this report is, as you saw with the last item, is I like to try to bring you clean, concise, simple things. And ARPA is neither clean nor concise nor simple. And so I'm going to attempt to guide you through something that's a little bit more messy than I'm used to presenting to city councils, but I think we're, I think we're going to get there. So let's start with the discussion you had on February 14. We discussed this $10 million standard allowance. There was some discussion, I think from Councilmember, uh, Silhaj, about needing to really be clear about the reporting requirements and deadlines to spend that money. So we've done quite a bit of additional work on that. I've talked to a few experts, to the extent there are experts yet, um, in ARPA. And, um, and then, uh, in addition to that, the council really kind of focused on four key areas to start. And I think that the way, it would be great in a perfect world where, where all things were equal for us to have a funding strategy that took us from $1 to the 11.5 billion we have. Unfortunately, we live in a time where needs exist today. And so what I've tried to do with this report is step you through the work we've done on the majority of these concepts, and then build in a few action items that I think you could take action on this evening. So let's start up, uh, with an update on the final rule. There was a miss, a misconception, uh, that I had, and I think that a lot of cities had, uh, that if you take this $10 million standard allowance, that it sort of just becomes totally, um, uh, unprotected funds that you can use in any way you want, uh, just like you could with most of your general fund dollars. And that is not accurate. It doesn't change, I think, the variety of neat things that the city could do with the funding, but I just want to be really clear. This is a chart that I actually pulled out of the, of the final rule. And if you see, um, for any projects, uh, or programs that are less than a million dollars, that top line says no written justification required. And, uh, you do not have to also report that to, um, the federal government. So that's, anything below that, it should be within the spirit of ARPA, but it's not required that you document. Greater than $1 million, but less than 10, a written justification is required, but we do not have to submit that to the Treasury for review or anything. We keep that on file. And if someday down the road, in a few years, we're audited, we have to be able to provide the reasonable justification for why we allocated the funds in that manner. So, for example, um, if, if the council chose, uh, uh, to fund some type of mental health assistance program at $2 million, it would be a fairly simple justification, literally, we're talking a few sentences. That, you know, obviously, it's well documented that, that COVID-19 has, has wreaked havoc on us physically, but also maybe even more so mentally. And, uh, and this is our attempt to try to right that wrong in our community, period. And you keep it on file. Someday down the road, a federal auditor shows up, you provide them the justification, and provided that it's not ridiculous, the, uh, the idea is that it's accepted. And 10 million or more, which really is not our situation, um, you have to report that to the Treasury. So, uh, and then i- if you take a look at the second column, uh, that's if you choose to get way outside of their list of, of authorized expenditures. And I don't actually have a problem to, you know, I haven't discussed this with the city attorney, but I think that as long as the justification is sound, I think it's more than appropriate to issue that report to the Treasury. We're going to have to do reporting, I think, April 1st already, and we will just be reporting that we've done nothing so far. But, uh, I don't know that just because you have to report, it doesn't mean that you shouldn't, you know, move forward with something really interesting you wanted to do. Here's the expenditure timelines. We have to obligate them sometime between, uh, now and December, uh, end of, uh, 2024. And we have to expend them by 2026. So, um, that, the end of 2026 is sort of our deadline, that all 11.5 million dollars and change should be allocated to something. Um, okay, funding concept number one, business grant program. Obviously, Tom, uh, Tom at the chamber explained that we have an imminent need for the program. I think everybody recognizes that. My concern was that we were going to continue to have this discussion more globally, and we're four months down the road, and we haven't got a business grant program out. Uh, and people, and, and businesses need the assistance now, as I'm going to show you in a moment. There was a, a desire for a need survey, which Tom was nice enough to do, uh, more than once. And, um, we'll get back to this, but the recommendation that I think is the most prudent at this point is to authorize $1 million in initial funding for the program and contract with the chamber to administer it. Uh, we have a variety of, of either past Lincoln, uh, programs and, and El Crow, Rancho Cordova, previous places that I've employed where, where these types of funds have been given out under, under a program, and it's set up to be fair. It's set up to, to, uh, make sure that you're prioritizing to the extent you can, brick and mortar. It, it, uh, it eliminates the, the potential for businesses that really wouldn't be qualified for this kind or shouldn't be qualified for this kind. So for example, uh, you know, sorry to Target, but Target's probably not going to, is not going to qualify for this kind of, uh, assistance. It's really designed to assist with our smaller businesses, and you'll see that here in a second in the survey. Here's a, a little component of the survey, um, kind of just asking the businesses what kind of hardship that they have gone through during this time. And you see some interesting things that weren't the case if you would have gone back about a year and a half, employee retention, difficulty to get infrastructure upgrades funded or done. Obviously, everybody's probably experienced some form of, of revenue loss, uh, and then miscellaneous expenses, PPEs continues to be a thing. Businesses are having to sort of change how they do business a little bit, um, to comply. And I think that as council thinks about moving forward with this, you should also think about the fact that this wave has subsided, but that doesn't mean that there won't be others. And, uh, I think that it's fool, you see some cities that have already obligated almost all of their ARPA money. I think that's very foolish in some sense, because it could be, and I hope not, but next year we have an even worse situation and have nothing to spend. Here's a, just an idea about like in terms of size of businesses, you see that only a small percentage are more than 50 employees, the vast majority are 1 to 10. Um, you have some, some sole proprietorships there and, uh, in 11 to 20 where. Uh, here's the business, uh, structure, you have all types, you have a lot of sole proprietorships, um, and then corporate entities, uh, and then every other option you can see there. And then corporate entities, and then every other option you can see there. So here's just a general question that we posed to them about, like, you know, what would you do with it? And I think that's an important piece of data for the council to know. And you see that they, I mean, this is about as broad a response as you can get. Only, the only one that was much smaller is this, this, this bottom line about expanding current footprint. But everybody else, it's all things that they need to do to just keep the doors open and continue to operate until things continue to improve. Oh, wait a minute. So Tom, I asked Tom, if he wouldn't mind, just for a few moments, share with you a little bit about what he learned after doing a lot of the outreach itself. One last thing, I'm not putting this spot here, I just forgot to say it. Tom and I have kind of have a handshake deal that the, the city would pay any third-party entity that wanted to administer the program some amount of, of the total. You see 10% kind of in, in, out there quite a bit. Tom, because he's a nice guy, had said that they, the chamber is willing to do it for 5% of the total, which is $50,000. I could tell you that I run a very similar program that was only $250,000. We spent at least $25,000 in admin for that. And what you get with it is the chamber is going to do multiple outreach to all members, non-members alike. It won't get treated any different. Why don't you tell them all the other things?
Yeah, sure. After all this time, all these months, I lose my voice. The one night I need to talk about this, I lose my voice. Kind of a rough week last week, but, but anyway, no, thank you, Sean. Sean's been great working with this. We, we did the survey out to 532 businesses. Obviously, those aren't all chamber members. And, and the survey results, as you can see, we had about 80 responses. So actually fairly, fairly good. They came in real fast. But most of the businesses we're talking about, they, they need to retain or hire new, obviously, staffing. That was one of the main, number one items. And then, of course, just trying to keep the doors open. Expansion, we thought that might be a little more. I know several businesses that want to expand right now. They can use some matching funds or something, but, but it's really just keeping the doors open. We've had a couple of local businesses lately do a GoFundMe on their business. I don't know if you've seen that on Facebook, but we, you know, they're still struggling. And not only in Lincoln, but in other, you know, Rockland, Roseville, also some of our members there. But the, the program itself, we've been working on this for a long time. Jennifer Hansen and myself and Pam Lopez and the DLA did the last grant program that the county offered, and we were able to get $175,000 from the county, the last part of the Shares Act. And that when, we had 83 applications come in, and we funded 75 of them, which was about $3,000 apiece on average. With this program, I'm thinking we'll probably receive about 150 applications. And as we go through the, the application process, we have many examples of, again, plastic share stuff, El Grove and other cities. They kept it simple. And we just really, between staff and myself, we're gonna figure out exactly how we want to do the grant. I have some ideas in here, but I'd rather just go over Sean. But base it on, you can do revenue loss or your net revenue in 2019. And we'll have a tiered system. But to just emulate what Sean said, this isn't gonna be, just anyone comes in and applies and gets along, we're, we have a matrix. We have, we have priorities of different businesses, restaurants, retail, non-grocery, salons, fitness gym. You know, we have a priority matrix that the county approved last time. So we would go through that and make, we'll make some changes, but it's gonna be a fair process. And one of the big ideas that I want to push through is doing some workshops. Can we well have to do workshops to help some of the businesses do this? Just the, the 75 to 80 people I worked with last time, it was kind of a, had to go out door-to-door and, and ask them to apply. Because they just feel like free money, that's not, doesn't make sense. So it was difficult. And, but I really think with this program, people, I, I think we should probably double that of what we're gonna do. So, is there anything else, Sean, you can think of?
So Tom, in, in addition to all of that, Tom, it's technical assistance, workshops, it's, it's, we're gonna set up, we have set up a very fair and impartial committee to be reviewing the applications so that it's, it's a technical review of, of, of an application. The last thing that we will allow, we will never allow, is any sort of influence that has to do with, you know, favoritism. It's going to be, what are your numbers? What do you intend to use the funds for? And, and we believe that, based on gross revenues, you, you know, typically, the tiers will be something like $7,500, $10,000, maybe up to 20 at the most. And if you think about it, it sounds like a lot of money at $20,000, but if you think about the losses over multiple years, it's really very little. So it's just sort of some help that we can give. So we can come back to that. Because that's sort of the action tonight. But before we do, I wanted to go through the other three items here. So the other concept that we had discussed, which is a bigger price tag, is fire department personnel funding. I think that it's important to just recognize that the fire department, maybe more than any other department, has been directly involved with the emergency response. Not to say that everybody has it, it's just that there are very few public safety members, aside from maybe police and fire, that are actually going into homes of people that are affected. And frankly, it has really been difficult to meet service demand. And I worry, and I think everybody worries, that if there's future waves, waves, that that's gonna continue to press even harder. So one idea that the council had discussed was funding a series of positions out of this money to, for a three-year term, with the understanding that it helps us, at least in the short term, artificially bring up our staffing levels to some degree to great, to meet the greater service demand. And so if I was writing that little paragraph we talked about, that's essentially what I would write. We would make sure that we combined it with appropriately budgeted amount from the new tax grant agreements, Fund 101, because that money also needs to spend. So the numbers on this slide are actually probably their worst-case scenario is assuming Fund 101 didn't exist, okay? Six firefighters, salary and benefits over a three-year period is roughly $2 million. That number increases by about $1 million when you go up to nine firefighters, and another little more than $1 million when you go up to 12 firefighters. I wish I could give you a really clear analysis of what I think this, the Fund 101 dollars would offset this. I can't do it, because we only have one year of, of experience in receiving those. After we receive another year, we'll have a pretty good idea. And when I fully bake this up for you for approval at some point or consideration, we'll put in some assumptions about how you can. Okay, so that's fire. Nonprofit grant program. So similarly, there was some neat, some expressed interest in the needs analysis. We're working on that still. We've got some feedback, but there's a little bit of additional outreach that we need to do. And I think the big question that's different than it would be for a business is nonprofits serve specific purposes. And nonprofit is sort of a nebulous term. It could mean a church, it could mean a theater arts company, for example. I met with one today that's nonprofit. It could be the lighthouse, it could be a variety of different types of things. So that's a slightly more complicated analysis, because I think that the there's no question, if you give funding to a business, that that funding, especially a small business, and a brick-and-mortar one, it's going to remain in Lincoln, because that's where they're located. Nonprofits are located in many places in some cases. And so we, we're gonna need to figure out a way to build in some protections for the city that those dollars are being spent for nonprofit services are being, are being rendered to Lincolnites. Is that what we say here? Okay. Okay. And then finally, mental health resource funding, this was also brought up. There's, I'm in the process right now of looking at a number of different creative programs. There's some really neat stuff that's happened up and down the state already, and probably a lot more coming. I don't have enough now to share with you the architecture of how it would look, but what I could tell you is that everything from literally providing mental health resources via, like, telehealth to your community free has been out there and has been piloted in other places, as well as partnering with school districts to sort of add, you know, additional help. So, so there's a variety. And I think what I'm going to do in a, in a subcategory of ARPA is separately, under separate cover, I'll give you a bunch of options that you can strike and tell me you like or not. So, let's wrap it up, because I've been talking way too long. Approval of the attached resolution would allow us to move forward immediately with the grant program. Christine and I will work on getting, in fact, I think the agreement's already been drafted to, to contract with the chamber. Tom stands ready to go to get this out onto the streets. And one of the things I've asked him to do, and we'll work with him on, is, once we get this initial funding round out, we're gonna circle back with a sampling of all of those businesses and get some specific testimonials about how did this help you? You know, what has been the impact of, of that? Because I think we just forget about it, right? It'd be nice to know that these dollars really went to saving somebody's business or helping them, you know, hire staff when they couldn't, or things like that. So and then, separate of that, if you'd like to provide any additional feedback or new direction on ARPA, I stand here waiting to hear it.
All right, thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Couple of quick questions before I go down the line here. The, this initial business grant, is it $1 million total? Because I forgot what we said. Is it just 1 million, or is it 1 million to start, and then we're gonna come back and do more?
Yeah, I, I think $1 million gets us off the ground, and it may be that, that's fine. It may be that, that Tom's wrong, and we get 200 applications, and a lot of them are, are fundable. In which case, we'll come back and say, hey, we think we need another tranche, everybody uses that term now, of $250,000, or whatever amount.
And then I'm just curious, who are you thinking, or what type of people, or where are you gonna pull from this impartial committee to, to go over the applications?
The safest way to do it, in my opinion, is, here's what I've done in the past. Staff, not board members from the chamber, serve as one portion of the review committee. And then probably Christine and/or I will either, if she's willing to, and if I'm willing to, one of us would serve sort of in a partial reviewer. And then usually what I've done is pick one or two other staff people in other departments. Because, to be honest with you, it's a technical review. Does it meet the criteria? Have they put reasonable justification about how they like to use the funds? And then, and then we have tiers about, we're gonna focus on the business's most hard hit first, try to fund as many of those as possible. And then we move down to tier two for businesses that were affected, but not as affected as maybe like a restaurant or a salon or something like that. So, and I think it's critically important, because we do not want any criticism of any kind, that it wasn't just a straight-up technical, you know, black and white review.
And then one last question. I know we're not deciding on that tonight. We're only doing the business grant, but I'm just curious, your, your thoughts on the six, nine, or 12 firefighters, and you said you're gonna how soon can you have that back to us so we can make a decision on that?
Very next meeting.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. I, you know, if you want my, my recommendation, conservative Sean would always say you start with six. You know, you have the funding to do much more than that, but I think that six firefighters, and we can maybe have chief speak to this a little bit. Does it solve all of your issues? No, but chief, how many firefighters do we have on, or currently employed, you know, with the number?
Currently employed, 18.
18. So you're adding a third. I mean, in one year. I mean, that's significant. So, and, but, you know, obviously, if council wants to be a little bit more aggressive, that's fine.
I was kind of hoping for nine, but that's a conversation we'll have, but that's just my thought. But anyway, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
No questions, really. I, I want to thank Tom for going back out. And I, I know, I know you'd already done it, but this gave me the peace of mind I needed and the data points I needed to be able to, to get behind this. I think this is an essential program that we get out there very rapidly. So I appreciate your work. I appreciate the chamber's willingness to take this on and to assist us in not spending more than we have to in administering the program as well. And I appreciate Sean's thoughtfulness and how we can go about all of this in a very meticulous and transparent way. So I'm gonna support this tonight. I hope that we have a process in place that will review future needs. If, if indeed Tom got it wrong, and we need more, that we can move swiftly and come back around and, and, and deal with that as well. I, I, that word tranche came out of nowhere for me. I'm 65 years old, and it appeared for the first time about a year and a half ago. No, no. No, it came out of the governor's mouth first, and then all of a sudden, it was everywhere. So I got through most of my life without tranche. I'll try not to use it at all. With respect to fire, that is a good conversation we need to have very soon. What I'm gonna be curious about, chief, is how, frankly, how rapidly you can onboard people and absorb them. Is six the right number to start that off with a review later, or, or is nine doable? You don't have to answer that tonight.
I'll say nine is doable, because nine is what we need to evenly staff all the stations for all the shifts. So anything less than that would be a Band-Aid, and doing nine would be doing it right.
All right, well, don't hold back. I appreciate that. It's a very straightforward answer.
Tom, thank you for 5%. That is, I've gone to nonprofits, which you are, in the past, to have them administer things, and it's much more than 5%. So, thank you very much.
Going through the last two years, like I said, our dinner that are not, it's just been, it's been quite frankly, hell, you know, some of these, you know, having the membership that we have, you know, we get the late calls on Friday night, you know, 9:30 at night, talking about the stuff they, they're going through. And so I just want to get this out. Again, I lose my voice tonight. We're talking about it. It's just crazy, but, but anything we can do.
And I think the six, nine, or 12 decision is really predicated on what the supplemental tax looks like. If you remember right, we said we would base it so it isn't acting like one-time money. All it's doing is speeding up the process of acquiring people. So I think that number is, everything else is predicated on the tax flow and the projected tax flow. So that we, we just, so that we all felt good, right? Using one-time money to do, to hire people that we were covered.
The term was comfortably uncomfortable.
So that's really all I have to say.
Councilmember Lauritson.
Yeah, I have a question for Tom. By the way, thank you very much for both of you for your presentation. It was excellent. Tom, I had the question, is this the money that we're giving out to these businesses, you know, in need, obviously? It's gonna be for businesses, obviously, that are gonna stay here in business in Lincoln, or?
Well, yeah, that's, that's the goal. I can't think of any right now that are, I mean, there, there are some that are in need of certain equipment. You know, they're doing some GoFundMes right now, so there's nothing that I'm aware of that's, or can ready shuts the door. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's just, as you see in the survey, you know, they need to hire more people. They, they, again, they spent a lot of money on PPP, which is crazy, PPE. One, one note about the, the, the one graph was 50, is almost 50/50 on the businesses that didn't apply for any help. Other than PPP, we excluded that. But I was really surprised, no plastic shares, no idle. I mean, I was really almost shocked that 50% of the businesses, because we hammered that for the last two years. And so that just kind of goes to show you, it's, they're a little hesitant about doing these things. And, you know, I, I'm confident that we're gonna, we'll have a nice, clean system and go through the matrix. We'll, we'll get it done. And if we need a little more money, if we get a little more applications, we'll come back. So. And then nonprofits, we can do the same process. And we did a survey with that, too, and we can work on that. As soon as this, get this thing done, and we can go right to them.
Right, got it, Bill? Can you take me back to that first chart?
Yep. Last one.
The standard allowance chart.
Yeah. There it is. Um, we, oh, there it is.
All right, so if we're keeping this at 1 million and the program is going to small businesses or local businesses, and it's for any number of things that they can use it for, let's say that some of them don't fully line up with the ARPA specifications, if it's under 1 million, we don't have to submit anything, so we're covered.
Yeah, I think.
But what happens if we have that somewhat loose program, which is what it sounds like it kind of is? And then there is additional need and now we go out with a second tranche and now it's over a million dollars of funding? And now we do have to have written justification.
My reading of the rule is not that each individual expenditure has to have written justification. It's that the city has established this program. And say you give out 50 grants, each individual grant would, you know, let's say we had 100 million. Each, each individual grant wouldn't have to write that justification. It's a justification for the pro, the total program.
That was my question, right? So first tranche, a million dollars. We give this million dollar program out to our local businesses. ARPA actually has very specific um, economic development impacts, how you're able to give that one for $1 to a non-government entity, right? So if I'm giving money to a local business, it has, by their final ruling, it has to have um, direct nexus to COVID laws, which your survey was wonderful. It said, here's what, how were you impacted by COVID? Here's the different way. Let's say that somebody is like, I want to use these funds because I need to, I don't know, they backfill it in some way and they use it in a way of our beautification of their business. Or they do something that is out of line with that immediate program requirements. If we keep it at 1 million, we're not subject under the in-line with allowable uses or the out-of-line with allowable uses. We don't have to report at all, 1 million and less. So that's correct. But let's say that we have a second tranche and now as a program, we're now at 1.5 million. Well, now we're over 1 million and now we do have to report for not allowable uses. And we just have to have written justification, but it changes our liability. So my question is, how are we going to structure the program? Are we going to be very strict about, hey, here's COVID-related losses and this is what you may spend the funds on? And you're going to have to report to us because we're going to have to keep a record? Or are we going to be like, it's a million dollars or less? We don't have to keep written justification, we're good.
No, I, I think even if the second thing you just said was the case, it's still good practice for us to require that they share with us how they're using the funds. You know, it would be really bad if somebody.
Are we putting restrictions on how they can be used?
They're going to, as part of the program, it should have a provision that allows A, us to review and audit, you know, practically small amounts of money. It probably would only be necessary if you just became aware that there was a serious, you know, misuse of the funds. But yeah, you want to avoid a situation where, you know, Bob's uh, burgers decides to go buy a boat for him and his family with the 20,000.
What you're saying is use, but we've had previous discussions before, right? How DLA and Chamber and certain entities wanted to be able to access some of these funds for things that honestly, these funds should be able to be used for, like, um, that would increase our economic development opportunity, but are outside of the immediate scope of, of ARPA. So I'm just wondering where we landed. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Here's, if you, uh, the, if you look at the resolution, I wrote it specifically to create that justification. So honestly.
That's what I was doing on my phone.
If, if we, uh, it honestly, and I feel very confident about it, if we were audited, I think that, well, one of the things we do other than give them my report is say, here's the resolution. It has very specific language in there that this needs to be used for that purpose.
And also on the app, on, on the application process, on, on the application itself, it, it, it's all tied to COVID and, and it has, and it attests to it. I put a lot of legalese in there to make Christine happy, but um, but no, I mean, they have to test. But no, we, we are, the application will be more specific and uh, simple but specific.
Okay, so we're not worried about going over that 1 million mark? That wasn't an intentional like, oh, hey, we're going to hit that because it just makes it easier for us. We're good, no matter what, our bases are covered and I can vote on this and be happy.
I think so, because if you look, I didn't put it at 999, 999, it's a million dollars. So we're in that second tier anyway.
There's checks and balances, just in the way that the program's written, the fact that their application has to respond to those checks and balances. So I, I don't foresee this being significant concern.
Well, I just want to say to Tom also, thank you. I, Tom's heart for the business community is just so evident. And uh, I mean, he goes above and beyond, um, I think, and we're very fortunate to have you here. So thank you, Tom, for that. And I look forward to getting this rolled out and uh, thank you, Sean, also. Okay, so let's see if there's public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we do have a hand raised. Gary McDonald, please go ahead. Gary, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It just showed up now that I was muted. So uh, first of all, I want to say that as a resident of Lincoln and of course I run Lighthouse, I just wanted to say that we're in full support of the proposal and I think that Tom has done an excellent job. I think that the council should consider giving him the full 10% um, and part of that be used for retention. Um, I think Tom does a great job. He's probably underpaid and part of the issue with COVID is there has been a mass resignation. It has been very difficult to hire counseling staff. It's been difficult to hire any staff. Our advertised rates are about 20% more than it was in the past. And we're, now we're to a point where we are offering, we are offering starting salaries what we are currently paying our staff. And the problem with that is of course, that if there is anyone else paying more, that there's a possibility that they could go to another nonprofit or go to work for the county. So one of our primary concerns is retention. In addition to that, we need to expand because the mental health need has dramatically increased because of COVID. Um, in my email, I sent you all an email, I sent to you all separately because I didn't want anyone to respond and possibly in violation of the Brown Act. So I sent everyone pretty much in the room there, the separate email. And then part of the email, I talked about the need. The need is, should not be underestimated. If you looked at any of the links that I sent in the email, you can see that the need for mental health was unmet before COVID hit and it has gotten much worse. Um, we have, in my email, I think that I mentioned that we have two families where a child attempted suicide and failed. We're getting more and more children, 40% increase in children with suicidal ideation. And we're also getting more children that are cutting. And behavioral health in relationship to children is directly related to the COVID, I'm sorry, the, the ARPA funding. Um, and that was in the email as well. And then lastly, I wanted to say that, I believe in the email, I mentioned that we have over 500 people, 500 people on a waitlist for mental health counseling. Uh, and then um, in closing, I wanted to say that, two things. First of all, it is easy to restrict funds. We do it all the time. We get many grants that are restricted funds, so we restrict them and we can track that. And then lastly, uh, for every dollar spent, Lighthouse over the last three years, 2% went to administration. I'll end because my time's up, thank you.
Thank you, Gary, really appreciate that. Um, I'll come back to your comments in a second. Was there anybody else with their hand raised?
No, Mayor, no other hands.
Okay, anybody in the gallery want, go ahead, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members and city staff. Again, Byron Chapman on 12 Bridges area. Uh, in reviewing uh, the steps taken, without question, I probably have a difficult time properly trying to find anyone that say, no, uh, it didn't have the impact that it has, and it certainly has. Uh, specifically, uh, I'd like to zero in on the firefighter issue. I too, uh, kind of bounced around with the numbers and what it may or may not do for the fire department. And if anything, the, the number nine should probably be the starting point. I, I recognize, uh, I think anybody that's following, you know, the public safety employees, that over the years prior to COVID, uh, we've been working very, very hard in order to try to find the dollars in order to get the people onto the job and on a continuous basis. Here, uh, I believe once we get that into place, I, I can't figure or think of another time that would be any greater or any easier to do than now. Because without those dollars, it still has made it very, very difficult to get that initial push to get people into those places. Once you do that, actually, when you implement a program, oftentimes then it's so much easier to operate. Yes, it comes out of the general fund, that's part of what the expenses are. But again, now you know what you're funding for. Uh, you're kickstarted with the amount of money that we don't have to come out of the general fund. And I believe that that's probably, like I said, at least the minimum in which we should look at that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Go ahead, Tony, thank you.
I really am amazed tonight, this is the second good thing, seeing this um, new, not attitude, but cooperation between the city manager or city and chamber, chamber staff. I know Tom works really hard for the community. And that's really what Lincoln need is using the chamber, chamber members and infusing some money here and there to really help the community, but really use the force to move forward. And this is really amazing. And I do echo, uh, you know, Gary's comments about the 10%, probably it's well due, or at least maybe looking at the tier program where, you know, initial 500,000 will be 10% and going after that. So when you hit million above would be 5%. But I know it's a lot of hard work and there's a lot of people in need and, and I echo the staff. You know, I was talking to Caltrans employees, you know, they get so much money that nobody can compete with them, you know, in our business. So, and small communities have, having a hard time to keep employees because of the salaries. You know, they go somewhere else or they stay home in this, the state or the federal government pays them. So it's really hard time, we appreciate the cooperation, really looking forward to a good time. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Tony. So in regards to the, I'm just going to make a couple of comments here. In regards to the paying the chamber 5 or 10% for administration, I feel like um, I mean, it would be wonderful to give him more. Um, but I feel like the chamber and specifically with Tom and the leadership is a real partner with the city. So at this point, my personal feeling is, we're going to be grateful for your offer of 5% and we're going to accept it. And then if something comes down the road where we can do more, I think we were open to talk about that. But we're going to just say thank you for that. And I don't disagree that it would be great to give him 10%. But the more money we spend on administration, the less we can give to businesses. And I think Tom's heart is to give as much to the business community as possible. So we're very grateful for your generosity and we, and like I said, nobody works harder in this town than Tom and Dreary. And uh, and I really appreciate it. And then going back to um, Gary's comments about the mental health needs, I think everybody on this council agrees with you, Gary, if you're still listening. Um, and we really, I appreciated your email. Um, and, and, and we'll get there, you know, in that mental health assessment. Um, but nobody's denying the needs. In fact, um, as a public school teacher, I have more and more kids who are struggling. Um, several of my former students have committed suicide in the last two years, um, which is just devastating. It's heartbreaking. And um, so, and I'm on the board of Kids First of Placer County and, and we have actually stopped receiving new referrals for counseling. We're going through our waitlist because we, we don't have enough counselors. So the need is there, we agree with you, Gary. Um, and I know council member Silhi has brought that up multiple times about, we do want to fund that. So appreciate the comments and we're very much aware and um, that's on the list and we'll, and we'll get to it, right?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know that I've been beating that drum, but it's really important to me. I think probably just because I've seen the impacts at least on our children. You know, I have three little ones at home and I've seen what it's done to them, to their friend groups. Um, it's a lot, it's families, and so I would agree with you. I really want to thank you, Gary, if you are listening, for all that you have done in our community and to address that. And um, I'm looking forward, Sean, this is for you, to any, um, separate from the nonprofit side, on the mental health side, I think that there's some really innovative, cool things that we could consider. And I'm really looking forward to seeing those proposals. And then to you, chief, I know that you hear us all the time, but I'm really hoping that we're able to at least start to put some teeth behind it with some of these funds to help you out. So I'm looking forward to the continuation of those discussions. And thank you, Tom, for getting this one right out the door, because it's already like a year too late.
And I would also just really agree with Tony that it's very exciting, these conversations are very exciting. And um, it's a really, it's a really exciting time to be part of Lincoln. And so I, and I sound like a broken record, but it really is with Sean being here and the new staff, we're going to meet in a little bit here and um, just building the team and moving forward. And, and Mr. Chapman is correct that the, um, having these ARPA funds, it's a, it's a good problem to have to figure out how we're going to spend them and funding the fire department. We can discuss six or nine or 12 or whatever, you know, so everybody is uncomfortably comfortable, right? But if, this is a, a rare opportunity that we will never have again, I don't think. And so um, my heart is to grab it and do as much as we can with it. Gwen, are there any other public comments?
Uh, Mayor, Gary has his hand raised.
Gary, did you want to come back and make another comment?
Nope, he's.
Did he forget to just take his hand down? Okay, all right.
It takes a while for the window to pop up to unmute, so I apologize for that. I just wanted to say that I'm still here, I hear you, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing on many uh, different areas across the board, infrastructure, the tax, tax issue that we have. I just want you to know that um, I, I've served on city council in the past in Manitou Springs. I think you're doing a great job and I do hear you and I do appreciate everything you're doing. And I appreciate that you're acknowledging the mental health need because I see it every day. And it just breaks my heart. So um, I would have been there in person, but COVID is still alive and I caught COVID a week ago. And um, so I, I'm still testing positive, even though they released me to, to go back to work as long as I'm masking. But anyway, I want to let you know I'm still here and I hear you and I, and I appreciate all your good work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary, I hope you're feeling okay. All right, so we'll bring it back to the council. Um, if you have other comments or questions, please go ahead. Otherwise, um, I will take a motion to approve the resolution that's before us.
I motion. Sorry.
No, go for it.
We need to read this again.
I think you might need to read it because you didn't read the full thing. So just start with number two, right here.
I did read it, but you can read it again.
Okay, adopt resolution 202252, authorizing a Lincoln Business Grant Assistance Program and direct the city manager to execute necessary agreement for the administration of the program with the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Sorry about that, councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhi.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata. Enthusiastic, yes. All right, thank you, everybody, for all that hard work. All right, moving on to uh, item 11, council-initiated business. Um, I do have one item of business. I never heard back about, um, I know Gwen sent out date possibilities for Sean's reception, but I didn't hear back if we had picked one. What's the status on that, Gwen?
Uh, we had only heard from a couple folks. Um, I handed it off to Jen Riley, so.
Can somebody just?
We'll send it around another.
Send it around, okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. I would, I don't want too much time to go by before we do that. I know you're trying to skate it, but it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen, it's.
I want it to be a big thing.
It's going to be.
Outdoors on Beerman's Plaza, so everyone can come and meet you.
Yes, so you can just stop that right now, it's going to happen, yes.
So, so based on Gwen's sideways look, that suggested that she sent it around to the council and hasn't heard back from a few of us, as opposed to, we sent it out to the whole town and I'll hear back from a couple people who want to come.
I know I sent back my response.
So I will say that, that I think we've had some shifts on the city's website and maybe with the emails as well. I'm, more and more is going to my spam filter.
I didn't say that I saw it.
So, what was that?
I don't know if I saw that email, but also I might have just not seen it, because sometimes it gets.
It's fine, just send it back around and we'll get something on the schedule. Awesome, great. Paul, do you have any business?
Um, well, it sounds like you're already going to make an introduction for us, or that Sean will.
Yeah.
So I'll leave you.
Are you ready to do that now? I was going to wait to, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm very, very excited to, to introduce to everybody our finance director, Nita Racker, who uh, I feel like I know a lot about her background because I've told everybody for three months now where she's from. And if you don't know, Nita comes to us from Eldorado County where she was the chief fiscal officer for the Health and Human Service Agency. Before that, she was with the City of Auburn as finance director. And before that, she was a finance director at the South Lake Tahoe, North, North Tahoe Fire Protection District and is a CPA. And then before that, she worked in auditing firms and a long, long history of, of um, finance expertise. And so she's been on board with us for a week today and has already dialed.
And so she's been on board with us for a week today and is already diving in. And um, we're just very, very happy to have her here. And I encourage anybody from the public that wants to learn more about city finances to contact her.
Awesome, welcome. It's great to have you. How are you liking it so far?
Ooh, putting her on the spot.
Oh, yeah.
It's a it's Lincoln is a very complicated city. I don't think I have to tell this this council that, and there is a lot to learn and a lot to get your arms around. And I'm very excited about the opportunity and uh appreciate appreciate all the welcome that I receive from this community.
Very thrilled to have you.
Very thrilled to have you. Just as a side note, as a example of what a small world we live in. So you just where you just came from, one of your coworkers, Grant Weber, his sister is my student teacher. And she brought you up, I didn't even wasn't even talking about it. She's like, yeah, you're a new finance director. And I said, yeah, she goes, yeah, she worked with my brother. And I was like, oh, my gosh, so crazy world. Anyway, we're very.
Grant is a good guy.
Yeah, and she is too. It's really great. So any other comments?
Yeah, so um, Sudvi brought this up for me. Um, Sean, can you give us an update on where we are on the uh tax sharing agreement and the annexation of Village Five?
Sure can. Uh, so um, not that far off from uh from this approval. Um, the cool, the cool thing about this agreement is that it's scalable and applicable to to Village Five. Village Five is a massive project by comparison, massive. In fact, Village Five is roughly four million square feet of commercial, separate of the million we just spoke about this evening. So uh, there's a little more scale to it, but the tax sharing agreement, as I've discussed with the county, is going to follow kind of not maybe not exactly the same numbers, but a similar path. Uh, and so that that'll be ready to go in short order. And then um, the planning component of it is mostly completed, I think, at this point. And so um, the it's just a matter of the um, the the developer, project applicants uh packaging together their Lafco paperwork and moving on. So um, I would say I'll I'll get back to you on a specific date, but if I had to um handicap it, I'd say three months plus or minus.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Dan, do you have any business? Bill?
Uh, yeah, I just had one item. Um, last Thursday, we had a great presentation at the Rotary Club by Mr. George Alves about fire safety. And that's something I've been really worried about. Um, he mentioned the fact that they have these fires, firewise councils uh with 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 the uh with with the county. And we used to belong. Uh, I don't know if anyone remembers that. And we don't belong now, and I don't know why we don't belong. But um, it might be a good idea to rejoin again because our city is kind of expanding into some of these rural areas. And um, it'd be nice to maybe coordinate some efforts with the uh the county as far as uh fire safety is concerned, uh especially mitigation efforts. Uh, I don't know, I I don't really know what would have involved, but other than the fact that it'd be another county uh committee that we would serve on, we'd probably have to have a member of our council serve on it and possibly somebody from the somebody else from the city. Um, I talked to Sean about it. I don't know how much uh this would this this would effort would be placed on the staff, but I'm sure it would involve community development, the fire department, and possibly code enforcement. But I just really feel maybe it'd be a good idea to actually rejoin this uh committee.
Chief, is he talking about fire safe council?
Is he talking about fire safe? Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so forgive me if I'm wrong here, but I thought your dad was our fire safe council lead for, is it just rural? Or is it all that was all Lincoln fire safe?
It the the Lincoln City proper is not really involved.
Okay.
So it's unincorporated Lincoln.
Okay, so that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, and he mentioned that we might, the city might want to rejoin. He said, we did belong to that one time, I don't, I'm not sure when.
We can have Sean talk to Chief about what that looks like and if it's appropriate.
I I can't imagine we ever would have. We were a volunteer fire department until frankly, this century.
Yeah.
Um, and I I don't recall.
I mean, fire safe councils do good work statewide. They're they're like a thing. I don't know that it necessarily, I maybe have maybe have Sean talk to Chief, and you guys can report back to us. Yeah.
Anyway, I have connections.
Speaking of small towns.
So it was it was Mr. Alves that actually requested it, so.
I have nothing.
Okay, so for um, not for business, but for information, I do have one um piece of information, it's kind of fun. I was contacted last week or two weeks ago um from a gentleman from Business View Civil and Municipal Magazine. And they do story and features on cities that are under a hundred thousand people. So we had like a fifteen, twenty minute Zoom meeting. He asked me a bunch of questions about Lincoln. We talked about, you know, the history and all that. And he said, okay, I'm going to present this to my editors, and we'll see if we want to move forward. I heard back from him today, and so they are going to do a full um uh feature on the city of Lincoln, which will be, it's really exciting, there's no cost to us. Um, and uh, if anybody's interested, I could forward you on the examples, you you're probably familiar with the the magazine. And so um, Sean um and Paul have graciously agreed to help me do that because being the city manager and um councilmember Joyner having such uh institutional memory as well. Uh, so anyway, I'm looking forward to the process, and it's a whole like production thing. And um, it'll be, it'll be really fun for Lincoln. It'll be a good feature, yeah. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Where where are we on homework coming out for Christmas?
Oh, yes, I need to contact them.
For real, for real, yeah.
It's almost exclusively in Canada for everywhere else in America.
Yeah.
They just haven't discovered.
They haven't seen the real deal yet.
All right, anybody else have any information items?
Yeah, I'd like to mention that last last week, most of us actually attended a groundbreaking on a new project, uh residential project in Lincoln. And what I'm excited about is the fact that the model uh that they're using is uh a rental project of single-family dwellings primarily. So they have a hundred and sixty-one homes that will be for rent, uh not purchased. Uh, while there's some of them are duplexes, but primarily they're single-family residences. And I think that fulfills a need that we've had in the community for a lot of years. So I'm, as I say, I'm I was blown away.
Yeah, I'm excited to see how that actually plays out, if you know.
I'm assuming it's going to play out.
That's I'm I'm assuming too, I'm anxious to see.
What makes it cool and innovative is that um, at least in our community, there hasn't been an entity that has filled this space. Typically, if you wanted to rent a single-family home, you did so uh from a private owner who might own an investment property or two or three. This is an entirely owned and managed property um that will not be allowed to degrade, that will not be allowed to to fall into to disrepair, which I think is often the worry that a absentee landlord might allow that to happen. And so this is, this is an interesting model moving forward. It's spreading um far and wide, and I'm I'm looking forward to seeing how it fits into the community.
Any information? No? All right, uh, seven thirty six, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I think that Dan holds the record. Was it you or Peter?
As usual.
So they rapid eight.
Dan?